Okay, so the League of Women Voters is nonpartisan. The League does not support or oppose any candidate or political party, but we believe in educating the voters to help them make their decisions. Um, before I introduce the candidates, I thought our county clerk was going to speak, but she's having trouble getting on. So eventually I'll perhaps after the candidate statements or maybe at the end of the program, we'll let her say something. So, so the candidates you have here are Teresa Call, Gary Stradling, Randall Wrighty, James Wernicki, Melanie Hand, Susie Haveman, and Reginald Page. Sharon Dry won't be here tonight because her mother died yesterday. However, she's sent me a statement that I will read. So we'll begin with the candidate statements in ballot order. They'll each have three minutes. If you wish to ask a question, you can click on the Q and A box in the bottom of the screen at any time and type it in. Anonymous questions will not be read. League policies is that all questions must be directed to all of the candidates. The Q and A boxes only for questions. The other members of the audience will not be able to see what you type. The chat box has been disabled, so please be aware that we may not have time to ask all the questions. So we'll begin with James Wernicki. We'll read the his first introductory statement first.
Okay, I get three minutes to introduce myself?
Yeah, right. So I should say you don't have to take three minutes, but you're welcome to. And keep your eye on Willow because she will be holding up the paddles.
All right. Okay, well, hopefully everyone can hear me. My name is James Wernicki and I'm running for Los Alamos County Council. I think I would be a unique counselor here because I'm still a mid-career worker. I have young kids. So I hope to give more voice to the workforce and families. You know, they're the engine of our community and unfortunately many can't live here. And so I don't think they get as much say as they should and how it's driven. You know, I'm still young enough to have dreams, but old enough to have some wisdom. So I guess when you hear my radical ideas, just remember I still have 50 years to live with the choices we make today. So some of those radical ideas are, you know, having a big focus on building high-density mixed-income housing, not just for L-Abys, but for the people who work in our community. Maybe even some of the retired folks would be attracted to downsize to some new housing and free up some of those family homes that they no longer need. You know, investing in small businesses is a big thing. I am a local business owner here. And I'm working on trying to start a second business to bring indoor recreation into Los Alamos. And I guess that's sort of my personality is when there is a problem or a need, I try to get out there and work on it. I do a lot of volunteer work in the community. I do trail maintenance. I work with kids doing all sorts of youth programs from coding clubs to rugby, mountain biking and skiing and all kinds of things. I think I'm just gonna kind of leave it there and I'll be happy to address any questions when it comes up.
Okay, thank you very much. So next I'm going to read Sharon Dry's statement. "I believe in the statement, 'You can only lead by serving.' I'm Sharon Dry, previously Sharon Rumener of White Rock, and I'm running to serve you on the Los Alamos County Council. I have deep roots in Los Alamos. It has been my home for most of my life with four generations of my family residing here. I attended Los Alamos Public Schools from elementary through high school, raised my three children in Los Alamos, and I'm the proud grandmother of seven grandchildren, all former and current LAPS students. As you can see, I have much at stake for the future of our county. I worked as a patent paralegal for the land legal department for more than 25 years and served on the registration and canvassing boards under the county clerk before announcing my candidacy. Los Alamos is a wonderful place to live and is a unique town that should not fit into molds of other communities. Our local businesses are vital to the quality of life in our community. Council should give full support to small local entrepreneurs by taking a supportive and encouraging approach with county ordinances that are reasonable and fair to enable success of each business, not impose barriers that hinder opening or conducting their business while still upholding its responsibility for building and public safety. During my campaign, I talked with many local business owners who expressed great frustration in attempting to open and operate a business in LA County. For example, interdepartmental conflicts have caused businesses to move opening dates out so far that owners had to obtain additional loans. No business should ever be considered nonessential. I support providing efficient delivery of a mix of low-cost, reliable power and utilities to all residents with a baseload of sources such as nuclear, coal, hydro, and natural gas. Alternative sources of solar and wind are important for peak needs. We need a long-range goal of energy independence, economic viability, and minimization of costs to our citizens. I stand for freedom from government overreach and dictating how we live in our homes. I look forward to hearing from you so that I can be of service. Thank you." That's Sharon Dry. So next we'll hear from Reginald Page. I think you're muted, Reginald.
I am, thank you. Hello, everyone. Thank you for making it tonight. My name is Reginald Page. Everyone calls me Reggie. I've been a resident of this county since 2009. Previously ran my own nonprofit organization here in this county, helping underprivileged kids and and working with creating a safe place for them to go and 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 develop their sporting techniques and things going moving forward. So the main reason I'm running is I'm here to represent the as the county needs to represent the residents of this of Los Alamos County. I believe currently we have lost sight of that and in the needs that's around supporting local businesses, lab employees, and and our kids and our youth. And so I feel that our residents, their voices are being unheard. I've spent a lot of time the last several months walking around, talking to people from place to place, house to house, business to business. And it's kind of unique to understand their problems and things that are going on inside their neighborhoods and inside their their businesses that are that I don't feel are being heard. You know, I'm not doing this for myself. I'm doing this for the residents and the people that aren't 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 being getting their voices out there. And I don't believe we're being heard by our current county councils. So I, you know, I want to support those people. There are some things that I talk to the county about or the county residents about. They don't even know what's going on in this county. And that's an issue. And they're very surprised about some of the things that are going on in the background. And I think we think we personally are responsible. I mean, that's what the county is for, is to support and help our residents of this county. And I believe that's been done. And so I'll leave it at that for now and answer any questions anyone may have.
Thank you. So next we'll hear from Gary Stradling.
Hi, I'm Gary Stradling. I'm running for county council because I think that there is a particularly acute housing problem that I hope to be able to help with. I value the service of county volunteers over the decades that have made this a great place to live. I grew up as a farm boy in Bollina, Mexico, the son of industrious but humble parents. I worked my way through college and have had have been frugal and industrious my whole life. My family have been building up New Mexico for five generations. My family and I lived in White Rock for 41 years. My wife Rebecca and I have raised nine children here. They've gone to public schools here. I've served our community as a planning and zoning commissioner, as the Pinion Elementary School PTA Vice President, and for decades as a Boy Scout leader at the troop and the district level. I spent 40 years working at the National Laboratory as a physicist and technologist, as a policymaker, and as a program manager. We have been sent on assignments to Washington DC, and I've traveled the world in support of the nation's national security policies. We have always wanted to return to our community here on the side of this mountain. My work experience is directly applicable to serving this community. I've had the opportunity of leading an international negotiation of 26 nations to a successful agreement on the Open Skies Treaty. I've managed difficult and unique national-scale problems in the Pentagon and have become comfortable dealing with difficult policy issues at high levels of bureaucracy in the Department of Defense, the Department of Energy, the State Department, Congress, and the intelligence community. I learned how to be persistent and to work past seemingly impossible barriers. You can find the details of my history and my views on county issues at my website, stradlingforcouncil.org. My main objectives for county council is to obtain significant land transfers from the federal government to build extensive new housing for the people who work in Los Alamos County, including those non-lanl people who we desperately need in our community. I believe that we can also work to solve that this will also solve many of our business problems. I'm supportive of representative, responsible, fiscally conservative local government. Good streets, thriving businesses, efficient, reliable utilities, including broadband, beautiful local environment, parks, and recreational facilities. Our residents should be listened to and not dictated to. We're not an HOA. If we want people to do certain things, we should be persuasive and facilitate desirable solutions. We should be good neighbors to our neighbors, including the Pueblos. Thank you.
Thank you. Melanie Hand is next.
Hi, I'm Melanie Hand, and I'm currently serving on county council. I believe that I carry a message with substance that is backed up by my education, professional experience, ability to work with a variety of people, and my understanding about many aspects of Los Alamos as a long-term resident. Having had an extensive work background in long-range planning for Los Alamos National Laboratory, I think understanding and referencing our plans and planning systems is important to guide a county counselor's decisions. Through planning, Los Alamos County achieves the right balance of housing and small businesses, environmental sustainability and conservation, infrastructure upgrades, health and welfare of our citizens, and more. Everything the community wants and needs is somehow tied to something else, and we need to strike the right balance to achieve success. Planning processes consider those complex interdependencies to achieve our desired outcomes. The county has about 46 different plans and supporting planning documents. I do realize we need to update and change these documents every once in a while to keep in tune with evolving needs. I stand for resolving the key issues currently facing the community through the analysis of all the facts and community input and accomplishment of the county's priorities that should be a result of long or long-range plans and implementation strategies. I believe that the way that we will achieve our vision for the future is by working together and finding common ground. It takes a majority of counselors to pass a decision, so it is important to not only listen to others' points of view, but also have something compelling to say that will motivate the majority to stand together on a decision. Being a current appointed counselor and having recent relevant experience on about seven different county boards and committees and long-term experience on county boards and subcommittees over several decades gives me an edge on understanding the processes and protocol of the position. So please vote for county counselor Melanie Hand.
Thank you. So Susie Haveman is next.
Hi, my name is Susie Haveman, and I'm a candidate for county council. I love that you're all here tonight. I think it shows you're civically engaged and you care about our community. Those are the reasons I'm running for this office as well. I care about Los Alamos, and I believe in the adage, "Think globally and act locally." I'm also seeking office because, thanks to my experience and background, I think I would be a capable county counselor. I was fortunate to grow up in White Rock and graduate a Hilltopper. After college and a great start with IBM in the Bay Area, Scott and I decided there was no better place than Los Alamos to raise our sons, live, work, and play. And since returning 30 years ago, I've worn a lot of different hats. As a parent and as a citizen volunteer, I've served on many different boards, committees, and task forces with our county, our schools, and regionally across the state. As a sampling, I served on the Environmental Sustainability Board. I led a capital campaign for the YMCA, helped with many school bond elections, and served on the Board of Quality New Mexico. I've been a lunch buddy at Mountain School, organized youth summits for the Family Council, and I served on the Business Advisory Board for Peak. I started and led a group called Quality Team Los Alamos with about 50 small business owners and the county schools, UNMLA, hospital, and lab employees, all focused on quality management and customer service. My local work experience has been equally diverse. I've worked for various small businesses, the lab, the county, and the Chamber of Commerce, where I advocated for small businesses, ran the Main Street program, the tourism programs, managed the visitor centers, and I started the trick-or-treat on Main Street at Halloween. Then, as a longtime Realtor, I learned a lot more about the perspective of newcomers, including our town's strengths and weaknesses, and about our housing challenges for home sellers, buyers, and renters. While we face a myriad of challenges and opportunities, I'm especially focused on four issues. Housing, both the supply and value and how meeting this need fits into employee staffing challenges and land use decisions. Small business support that enables downtown and White Rock vitality along with our economic diversification goals. Environmental sustainability to enhance our quality of life experience and be part of climate change solutions. Good governance to ensure the county is listening to its citizens, is transparent about its decisions, and is acting in a fiscally responsible way to meet goals of operational excellence. But these are just my focus areas. You may have others, and I look forward to listening and learning from you. My name is Susie Haveman, and I hope to earn your vote for county council.
Thank you. Teresa Call is next.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight or for reviewing this recording at a later date. My name is Teresa Call, and I'm running for county council because I want to continue to give back to this community that has given so much to me. I came to Los Alamos about 39 years ago for a job at the laboratory, and I fell in love with this unique small town and its environment. Although I came here from Texas, I had grown up in a small town outside Philadelphia, so I felt right at home. I've raised two children here and have been involved in or volunteered for many of their activities. That included coaching sports, building houses in Mexico over spring breaks, and serving as a lunch buddy through Big Brothers, Big Sisters. I've also contributed to this community by serving on the boards of several nonprofits, including Sage Cottage Preschool, the Unitarian Church, and PFLAG, which stands for Parents, Families, and Friends of Lesbians and Gays. I'm currently volunteering as a youth advisor at the Unitarian Church and am on the Los Alamos Golf Association Board of Directors. I have a degree in safety engineering, and my career at the laboratory focused on environment, safety, and health and management. As such, my role was to collaborate, listen, and learn about the important work at the laboratory in order to facilitate the work while ensuring the safety and protection of the workers, the public, and the environment. I was also involved in many of the laboratory's diversity efforts, and I served on the laboratory's Diversity Affirmative Action Board. I believe these skills and my extensive experience in this community position me well for a role as county counselor, and I hope you will agree. Thank you.
Thank you. And Randall Wrighty now.
Okay, well, thank you, Becky Shanklin, Barbara Kalif, and League of Women Voters for again hosting this forum, which for many years has been the event of the campaign season. I'm Randall Wrighty, and I've been honored and privileged to have served on the county council for the last four years, including the last two years as chair. I'm running again because I believe that there is more work to be done, particularly in four areas. One, seeking housing opportunities for all ages and income levels. Two, helping our existing businesses survive in a challenging economy. Three, developing the social services hub that coordinates the needs of residents from newborns to seniors and fills the existing gaps and services for both physical and mental health. Number four, protecting our environment and advocating for quick and comprehensive cleanup of all legacy waste from the DOE. These are four issues I've worked hard on over the last four years, and if I hear from community members at summer concerts, campaign events, county meetings, and of course, one-on-one communications, and in person and in my email, these are four issues that are high priorities for you also. Number one on the housing issue. While we hear about the need for housing to accommodate the expansion of the workforce at LANL, it is important to consider those who already live here, whether they're retirees looking to downsize to appropriate senior housing, or school employees, or those that keep our businesses and services running and can't afford to live in the county. I support the careful and pragmatic development or redevelopment of available or underutilized land and buildings in the county to best meet the needs of the community. First, looking at specific demographics, such as the missing middle, senior, and those who qualify for income-based affordable housing, instead of rushing to approve as much housing as possible. Number two, local businesses. Existing local business owners are telling me the biggest issues they have are high rent, the shortage of skilled workers, or more recently, any workers. I believe the county has prioritized assisting local business with those issues. First, by fine-tuning the assistance it provides currently by having county staff and outside agencies such as the LDA CDC and the Chamber establish a one-stop approach for existing respective businesses to develop, succeed, or expand in our community. Number three, public health. Many people I have talked to have expressed concerns about the need for additional resources in the community, particularly for behavioral and mental health for all ages, but also for women's health. For several years, the establishment of a social services hub has been discussed. It is time to make this hub a priority and get it rolling. Number four, environment. As you know, protecting the environment has always been a priority for me, not just preserving, protecting the environment, but implementing the recommendations of our task force and board. I also keep a close eye on land and legacy waste cleanup progress by participating in the DOE Technical Work Group and attending communities with the Environment Department. My name is Randall Wrighty, and I ask for your vote for county council. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so now it's time for questions and answers. So all the messages you typed into Q and A have gone to Lynn Jones, and she will choose the questions. Each for the for this period, each candidate will have one and a half minutes to respond. And again, Willow will show the paddles. I think one minute and then when you have 30, 30 seconds left, so that I'll announce when the last question's about to be read. And after the question and answer period, each candidate will have one minute for a closing statement. And then we're going to hear from our county clerk, and also I'll have some other announcements to make. So, thank you. So let the questions begin. So the first, let's see, we're going to go in reverse order now. So reverse ballot order. So how did I do this? Anyway, we'll start with Reginald. Lynn, what is the first question?
Okay, the first question is, and I'm going to kick this off with a League of Women Voters question. "Los Alamos is a small county in an arid region. How much can the county's population grow without sacrificing quality of life?"
I believe the county can can grow if we currently use the resources we have in town and using some of the spaces that are available right now, such as the plan to put housing up near the middle school and and also using some of our downtown resources and providing that ability for the owners of those those businesses or those stores downtown to be able to put housing above those. So I believe I believe there's a chance for an expansion, also working with the lab. The long-term goal would be working with the lab and trying to acquire additional land to put housing on. I think that's on the short-term goal, like I stated before. But on the long-term goal, I think we need to work with the lab itself and try to acquire some additional land to put housing on.
Gary, would you please give your answer?
Thank you, Teresa. Los Alamos is a wonderful place. It's a much nicer place than areas like Tucson or Phoenix or Las Vegas. And we have lots and lots of wonderful natural resources around us and a lot of land. It shocks me when somebody says, "Well, where would we build?" And I say, "Look around it." We're surrounded by thousands and thousands of acres, much of it recreational, but much of it not. We have a lot of area that we can put houses in, and it's a matter of persuading the folks who have those resources, who own those resources to transfer them to the county. And then we have to do the development that brings balance, uses water wisely, that has the the roadways and the utilities and the new businesses. So I could see our community being a vibrant, dynamic place 10 years, 15 years, 40 years in the future. I think it's quite exciting. Thank you.
Melanie?
Hi. I believe that based on my discussions on the Federal Legislative Committee currently as I'm serving on county council, that we need to work more regionally, that the amount of growth that we are trying to achieve to accommodate the laboratory is also going to affect a lot of our other systems, which means that infrastructure, roads, parking, et cetera, will be impacted. And so it can cause a lot of different issues that we're maybe not considering right now. I believe that we need to infill the vacant blighted areas and possibly use those as mixed-use spaces for high-density housing and shops and other retail. We're already doing this. These decisions are already being made on county council, and I would want to continue to pursue that. And I guess my my priority is to really preserve the quality of life for our current residents. So that's that's my position.
Okay, thank you. Susie?
I think we need to also preserve quality of life for our current residents, but that also then means supporting our employers, the big one across the bridge and the small ones here in town, which includes our small businesses, UNMLA, our hospital, and the schools. And to have a vibrant community and maintain a quality of life, I believe we do need to add more housing. And at what point, you know, is there a threshold for where the population, where we have a tipping point? I'm not yet sure what that would be, but clearly we need to account for the capacity of our schools, the transportation and traffic issues, and of course, our utilities and our natural resources, including water. And I think that also includes thinking about how we are going to provide power and electricity as we try to transition to a net-zero community and firming up our renewable resources so that we can continue to support a vibrant community. And I would want the new housing to be as much as possible downtown, infill downtown in White Rock, where we've got higher-density housing that provides opportunities for newcomers, young people, and retirees who would like to stay in town. Thank you.
Thanks. Teresa?
Thank you. You know, I've heard numbers like the lab, the county can handle up to 25,000 people without significant encroachment on our open spaces and our, our, the spaces that we currently value, like the stables and, and the canyon areas. Also without significant cost to our infrastructure. We can, we can do some upgrades for our infrastructure to our schools to probably handle within a reasonable amount of money are up to twenty-five thousand people. I'm opposed to, to developing in our open spaces. In fact, I think we should be expanding our open spaces and, and making sure that they're appropriately designated so we don't develop those open spaces. So twenty-five thousand is my answer. And I, and I wouldn't exceed that. And I think supporting the lab in a regional development is the best path forward.
Thank you. Randall?
Can you repeat the question? I just want to make sure I'm answering the right question. I've heard the bad part about quality of life. Could you repeat the last, I mean, the whole question again for me?
Los Alamos is a small county in an arid region. How much can the county's population grow without sacrificing quality of life?
Okay, so I think first have to understand what the quality of life is. And I think that a lot of people do really appreciate the outdoor activities we have here in Los Alamos County. When we had a, they did a survey or kind of a contest to see what things like people liked about Los Alamos. Around a quarter of the people said something that was directly or indirectly related to hiking and trails, other things related to views and scenery. So I think that we really do enjoy and appreciate our open spaces here. And that's why I had stated in my opening statement is I'm, I'm for protecting open spaces. I'm, I'm for redevelopment as opposed to trying to develop greenfields. So I think that's, that's kind of part of it. And I think in terms of a number of people, I don't know that I have a real specific number, but I, I know from the studies we did for the downtown plans, there was on the order of, you know, some hundreds number of units that could be developed. And as we see with the amount of development, it takes some time to develop things in Los Alamos County. So I don't have a specific number, but I, I think it's really important to make sure that we, we protect open spaces and other aspects, the quality of life as we're going forward. Thank you.
Thanks. And James?
All right. So I guess it depends on what quality of life means to you. So for me, it's about having things for my kids to do. And to have that, we need workers that can live here. We can't afford to have workers that commute every day. So, you know, I want restaurants and I want things that, that my kids can go to. I also want better medical care in this town. For those of you that know me, you know why I need medical care. And you know, right now it's like going to get a physical. It's like a three-month wait. And that's just because doctors don't want to live here because, you know, there's nothing that appeals to them and they can go live up in Denver. So things like that. So, so we're already sacrificing quality of life by not having housing. So like I did some measurements, you know, if you estimate like it, it, you know, with a good plan, you can get about a hundred units per acre. The Smiths area is about that, that whole kind of like vacant area. There's about nine acres. So we're looking at like nine hundred units theoretically. Same down like in White Rock where that MRA area is, that's another nine acres. So right there's like eighteen hundred units without sacrificing open space. Of course, you're going to have to address the increase in traffic. So I hope that we can think about doing more pedestrian and bike friendly stuff because I mean, there's just, there's no way to build bigger roads here. And I know I'm going to piss off the golfers with this one, but I'm totally not against developing housing on the golf course. I'm sorry, guys. I, I want you to have your thing, but you know, housing I think is the priority right now.
Thank you. Okay, next question, Lynn.
Before filing for office, how many council meetings did you attend in the last two years?
Oh, sorry. Gary?
You're muted?
I've been very busy. I was in Washington DC doing another job before I came back to the county. I did attend a council, a council meeting in which I offered myself as a candidate for vacancy and was rejected. Somebody with much less experience was selected who was more in alignment with the majority of the council. And so, so I did not attend a lot. I've been busy with, with many other things, but I have been attending council quite regularly, usually by video.
Melanie?
I can tell you that I've been attending a lot of county council meetings since the end of January. A lot of meetings. Before that, before I was on county council, I was, well, and I still am the president of the Los Alamos Mountaineers, a nonprofit organization here in town that has just recently celebrated their seventieth anniversary. So I have been the president for the last two years and the vice president for the year before that. And it just so happens that all their meetings, their board meetings and their club meetings are all on Tuesday nights. So I was unable to attend a lot of them until I became a county counselor.
Thank you. Suzie?
In the last two years before declaring for county council candidacy, I attended the meeting or meetings that were talking about kind of redevelopment of downtown and the proposals related to CB Fox and the Real Deal Theater. And there was different options. And so I participated in those because I just got really interested in that. I worked at Clement and Benner when I was in high school. And I just, and as a past Chamber of Commerce Director, I just really care about our downtown a lot. And then I was also, I applied for it and then was appointed to the Resiliency Energy and Sustainability Task Force. So really anything in that lane about our utility sources and environmental issues, the landfill composting, how we handle our, you know, waste recycling. I always care about those issues and have always tuned in when I can. And then once I was appointed to the board, we, you know, we, I, I, I had a really bad mountain biking accident and then had to resign six months in. So I missed being able to bring that, you know, to finish that out. But I did, of course, listen in when that great RES Task Force made its presentations to the council. Before the pandemic, I participated quite a bit. And when I was the head of the Chamber of Commerce and as a Realtor, I, I actually presented to county council. So I've kind of paid attention and been in that lane for a few decades now. Thank you.
Thanks. Run, I'm sorry, Teresa?
So it's not because I'm old, but I can only recall one time that I attended a county council meeting and it was because I was supporting Dragonfly Playhouse in their petition for a special use permit. And actually, now that I think about it, that wasn't even a county council meeting. That was a committee meeting. So let me just say zero. And I suspect that I'm very, very much like the majority of the community here. If you have attended those meetings, they're pretty painful. And so I, I'm not really sure I would recommend that people attend those meetings. But there has to be a way that you find out and that you can find out relatively easily what is happening in this community. And I don't really feel like there's that venue currently. So one of the things I would do as a county counselor is figure out a way to keep people better informed without having them have to attend the county council meetings. Thank you.
Randall?
So I, I think that I was absent. So we're talking about March of this year for the previous two years. I think I might have been actually absent for one, but when I'm absent for a meeting, I'll watch it later. And I do take exception to the, the county meetings being tedious, but that's, I guess we all, we have to have our own opinions, but there's a lot of good stuff that goes on a council meeting. So I want to encourage everyone to attend all of them. But if they like reading a synopsis, that's good too. So we are, we do work on that. And so we have, we have had some new initiatives to have some better synopses of council meetings.
Okay, thank you. James?
So the only council meeting I can remember attending was on the mountain bike trails. Not sure if that was in the last years or not. But since, since, since running for candidate, I've attended either online or in person, one or two a month. You know, I kind of have to agree with Miss Call that it is a little bit tedious. I would love to see council meetings get shrunk down from four hours to one hour. But you know, I know everyone needs to say their piece. And I've, you know, I've gotten involved on the personnel board, so I'm getting involved with the county that way. But really, I mean, I'm, I'm a parent. I have two kids. I have a wife, you know, I want to spend my life paying attention to them. And I know that, you know, most working class people probably want to do the same and, you know, enjoy the community and not be stuck of, you know, for their Tuesday evenings. Yeah. So Mara, I can feel your eyes judging me right now.
Okay, Reginald?
So up until recently in, in putting in my candidacy to run for county council, I hadn't been at too many. I lately I've been watching the videos, listening and reading the media notes because personally, I think they need to be shrunk down myself for hours. I don't know. I work at the lab and I'm in meetings from seven AM in the morning till five AM in the afternoon, roughly all day long. So yeah, seeing, seeing, having those, having those four-hour meetings is kind of tough, especially like James got a family, got kids. And so trying to pay attention to them, but I have gone back and reviewed what has been said, particularly to do with our utilities department and housing in small business and some of the things that's been going on, particularly with our small businesses in town, some of the issues are having. So so thank you.
Thank you. So if you're curious about that telephone icon, that's our county clerk, Naomi Maestas, and she will speak after the closing statements, but we'll still, we still have more questions. So Lynn, next question.
How would you specifically help small businesses with rent, with space for small businesses? And how to help with building codes to bring up rental space to current code and not penalize small businesses or shut them down with red flags?
Melanie?
Oh, you picked me first. Okay. Well, there are some programs that are available through economic development that helps small businesses. And I'll just give you the acronyms. I think even in the voter guide for the primary, I identify where you can look for that specific information. But the acronyms are LEDA, L E D A, ARPA, A R P A, and MRA. Okay. And those are there to help us with a variety of different county government types of programs for supporting businesses.
Thank you. Suzie?
This is a really important topic. And as someone who is the head of the Chamber of Commerce, I was a Realtor for eighteen years. So I worked with homeowners and property owners trying to improve their property. And in the course of this campaign, I've met with a couple dozen different small business owners here in town. And there's no doubt we've got a lot of room for improvement and a common thread is how hard it is to sometimes work with the county and to navigate the permitting process and inspection process. I think there's also been a common thread of a sentiment that, that things have improved. And although I don't think that there's a hundred percent consensus on that, but if I were graphing it, I think we've seen some improvement. I think one thing we need to do is remove silos. We need to help, you know, remove obstacles, don't hinder, actually assist. So for example, when a business applies for a permit, this is all new to them. It might be, you know, what county people do day-to-day, but the small business people need some handholding. If there are requirements that need to be met, those requirements need to be enforced consistently and equitably. And then we need to handhold people and remember that we're all on the same team with the same goals. I think improving our small business community also helps our residents because I think in general, people are looking for more amenities to enhance our quality of life and downtown vitality, both in Los Alamos and in White Rock. Thank you.
Thank you. Teresa?
Would you repeat the question one more time?
Yes, hold on.
Sorry.
Okay, let me just mention that the Qs and As are all in the, in a chat view that you can pull up and just look at.
Here we go. How would you specifically help small businesses with rent, with space for small businesses? And how to help with building codes to bring up rental space to current code and not penalize small businesses or shut them down with red flags?
Thank you. So the programs that Melanie mentioned, ARPA and, and others are available to help small businesses with a variety of expenses. There's currently applications that are being taken and reviewed by the county right now under that, under ARPA. With regard to how we, how we handle small businesses, you know, again, as in my role as an environment safety and health, there's a, there's a fine line between supporting and policing. And we really need our county to be more supportive and to treat our customers, our small businesses like customers, not like the enemy and actually help them walk through the process and, and facilitate getting their businesses up and/or compliant with requirements. So I would, I would want to work with the county to, to try and make sure that we're more customer focused to, to deal with the latter part of the, the issue. Thank you.
Randall?
Okay. Well, thank you. So I think we've already heard some of the, some of the specifics that are already in place. And I mentioned something in my opening statement about making sure we have a one-stop approach to the county plus all the groups that are supporting the county, often under contracts, word in contract county. So I think that's one specific thing that I'm looking at. Another thing I'm looking at is making sure that the county has metrics. I would want to develop metrics for monitoring these programs and seeing if they're successful over time. So I think that's another specific thing that I would like to see us doing. So I think that that also means that these, this has to be reporting to council. And so we have to hear that, you know, from staff. And I think it also, as we've already heard a lot of talk about outreach, I think that that needs to work also. So we need to be present in the community and reaching out to the local business community. Something that we didn't hear was the Metropolitan Redevelopment Area in White Rock. And so that's an opportunity for the county to do some things that are not allowed otherwise. And so that's an opportunity for the county to do this. And then in terms of code enforcement and, and red tags, I mean, that's also a case where the county needs to be working with the business owners from the, from the start to make sure that they have, they understand what the requirements are and the requirements don't change during the project. So I think that's all I wanted to cover. Thanks.
Thank you. James?
All right. Well, the first thing for reducing rents is to get Lano out of the business of dictating rent prices. Now, how do you do that technically? That is a big challenge, right? I think you're going to have to persuade them to, to improve their image some way. So being able to show Lano leadership that how it's hurting the community and how pulling out, I mean, they can, they can develop anywhere they want. It significantly impacts our local economy, you know, to the detriment of it. So this is something where, you know, So this is something where, you know, opening up a dialogue with Lannell leadership, um, with the Community Partnerships Office, those kinds of things, uh, you know, working with Lannell from that angle, uh, I think is probably, um, like as Ms. Cole said, like being supportive, not policing, not telling them what to do, but trying to work with them, um, from that angle to kind of move out. You know, stop doing contracts that develop in town, um, all those kinds of things. Also just building more, right? Like increasing supplies. So, uh, when there are development opportunities like those lots sitting over on Twentieth Street, uh, instead of, you know, giving them to some big developer out of Albuquerque, that really doesn't have any skin in the game in this community, why don't we put those up for public auction to local entrepreneurs that actually have plans to build mixed use developments? Uh, and, you know, make it easy for the people in this community to develop this community. So tho- those are ways to increase the supply, let local people own the property so they're not dealing with ever increasing rents. Talking about simplifying codes, again, as Ms. Call said, you know, the, uh, the code, the relationship between entrepreneurs and code enforcement needs to be supportive and cooperative.
Sorry, you're out of time.
I, all right. Thank you.
Everyone needs to keep their eye on Willow. Reginald.
Well, I think the first part of the question is, is the main concern is how do we, how do we, how do we get the buildings up to code to, you know, how, what, how do, what do we need to do to be able to help these owners, the property owners out to get the buildings up to code? So when the businesses come in to rent those spaces, they're, they're not challenged with, uh, having to take out permits and getting shut down because the space doesn't meet codes. So I think working with the property owners is the first objective. You got to start somewhere and I think that's the first place you got to start. You got to get the buildings up to code. You got to work with the building owners to get them up to code. And then when you actually do rent these out, the, the people that are renting them to start their businesses don't have a lot of challenges and red tape in their way. Um, so I think that's the first thing you have to do. You have to work with these property owners and owners. I know there's some issues downtown right now with where the old CB Fox used to be, um, with bringing that up to code and, you know, the cost of that. So we've got to work with them through whether it be incentive programs, tax, tax incentives, whatever it needs to be to get them, to get them to update those buildings, but also helping them in the meantime. Otherwise, these places are going to still be sitting here, breaking another ten years from now.
Thank you. Gary.
Thank you for the opportunity to, to talk about this. As I am out knocking on doors every day around the community, I meet quite a few people, a surprising number of people who are involved in small business enterprises. And they talked to me about their, uh, their day to day challenges and how they came into it and what they're trying to do and how hard it is. Uh, I talked to people about how difficult, about, uh, doing contracting in the county and they, uh, always I hear about how difficult the permitting process is. So we've, we clearly have a problem in the county. In the forty years I've been here, I have seen many, many delightful businesses dry up and blow away. Uh, the, the bowling alleys, the movie theaters, the, the hobby bench was one of my favorites and so on. Radio Shack, a part of that's a national problem. I am not an expert in this. I will look to others who are more expert, who've been working in these areas for a long time. But I, I think that it's a very, very important thing for us to be working on. And in particular, the county must not be a barrier to small businesses. It should be a facilitator. I love the image of the local police jump starting a car instead of a bulldozer, uh, dozing it off the side of the road. Uh, we should be the jump starter for, uh, businesses that are having troubles. Uh, we should not be working to find people in error. We should be working to enable them to be successful. Thank you.
Thanks. Lynn, the next question.
Please explain how egress from North Mesa will be considered for an evacuation if an eighty plus housing development is built as proposed on the McDonald property on San Eldefonso.
Suzie.
When I've been out, um, meeting people, knocking door to door, people who live in North Community and on North Mesa have definitely expressed concerns about this. And my parents used to live on North Mesa. So I, I understand from their perspective. I will say that, um, concerns like this were raised when Ponderosa Estates was developed. Concerns were definitely raised about this when Camazon was developed and even after Camazon was here about ingress and egress. And these concerns were definitely expressed when we had the evacuations for Cerro Grande and Los Contras fires, but especially with Cerro Grande. I think that's something that has to be looked at, absolutely. But I think that when you, um, when you weigh the pros and cons, like we have to do with any major decision, I think that the need for housing is, is very acute. And so we got to work together to figure out ways to work with our public transportation, our bus system, road reconfiguration, reconfiguration of the roundabout if necessary. Got to think about maybe the timing of, um, the middle school, um, you know, transportation, same thing with Baranca Elementary. Could we look at, um, having, uh, a little market or a cafe or, you know, both? Some other little retail amenities up on North Mesa to minimize the amount of driving from, um, the Mesa into town. I think anytime we can have, um, success in minimizing traffic and congestion and and burning of fossil fuels is better. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Gary.
Well, I've been up on North Mesa recently knocking doors and I have heard from residents there about their concern. Uh, not so much traffic, although everybody has concerns about uh, the need to be able to get out of this community if there is a, uh, if there is a disaster. And as we've had the wildfires, it's not just North Mesa, it's everywhere. And, uh, we are really necked down to a couple of small roads. And during those kind of evacuation events, it is a big deal. And I think that that needs a, a lot more thought. With regard to eighty plus, uh, units on North Mesa, that is not, uh, it, it is big, but it is not a huge, uh, increase in the size of that portion of our community. As has been said before, we have to look at the traffic plan. We have to manage that and make it viable. Thank you.
Thanks, Randall.
So the question had to do with the ingress egress and it was referencing emergencies too?
Please explain how egress from North Mesa will be considered for an evacuation if an eighty plus housing development is built?
So, uh, I, well, I live on North Mesa, so I'm, I'm very familiar with the evacuation plans here. So depending upon the nature of where the, uh, incident is, th- there is one option that you'd actually be sheltering at the soccer fields in place. Uh, so, cause we, as we know, there's, there's one pinch point. Uh, North Mesa is a cul-de-sac, um, and we'd heard some different things about whether the fire department was coming out here during Cerro Grande. So I, I think that with the way that the, the town is structured, it's an issue on North Mesa, issue around the community, various neighborhoods that ingress and egress, especially during emergencies is problematic. We do have an emergency plan that is reviewed regularly. Uh, of course, with the recent latest fire, uh, I was involved in reviewing that and to seeing what the options are for the county. When we're looking at a new development, that's also key to what they should be looking at during a new development. So there should be an analysis. There is most likely a traffic study uh, for routine traffic, uh, but they also should be looking at the consequences of emergency. How are people going to get out? And I think people need to have that information. Uh, so that is one of the things I have been promoting is making sure that, that we have that information out that, and I've been asking the staff to make sure that we have the information out on how you get. But what are the emergency options for every neighborhood? So thanks.
Thank you. James.
Uh, well, I guess, uh, what I would say is don't wait until the last minute to evacuate. You know, this town, the road infrastructure is just not great, right? We were built as a secret government project. We're meant to be hard to access. The egress is never going to be good. Um, I mean, look at, look at what's going on with Trinity right now. Every time we need to do repairs, we're going to have this going on. So, you know, it's sort of this personal responsibility of being aware of your community and what your community is capable of. I mean, we can open up the, the roads and the canyons if we can work with the pueblo to evacuate people that way, but still, uh, like when the Cerro, Cerro Palado fire happened, um, that was my first encounter with a fire. Uh, and I bugged out on Monday, you know, after following, you know, what the reports, you know, the, the firefighters were giving and following the fire and I just, I felt the risk level was too high for me, so I bugged out with my family. You know, and, and I think that's, uh, you know, everybody needs to take some responsibility, uh, for evacuating themselves and protecting themselves and realize that our community is never going to have good egress.
Reginald.
You're muted.
All right, sorry. Um, so I, I think the evacuation plan needs to be looked at as you add additional housing into this, to this area, to this, uh, county. You definitely got to update the, uh, the evacuation plan. Um, I think the county has done a pretty good job over the years of evacuating people for the fires. I was personally here for the last major event, um, where we had to evacuate. And, um, I, I, it was pretty orderly. People, uh, did a really good job. You know, and the analysis needs to be done anytime that you're adding more houses. I, I agree with Freddie on this is that you, you've got to look at how we can get traffic out of here if, if, is it quickly and, and how safely can we do it? Whether it's opening up roads, you know, one way or whatever we need to do. I can tell you right now in the current configuration that, um, our, our Trinity Drive is in, I'm, I'm concerned about that, um, especially if we don't open that up. And, and on a one way during a major evacuation. So that's something else that needs to be looked at. I think there's an inherent risk there. So.
Thank you. Teresa.
So I, I do agree with Randall that there any new development is going to have to have a, a transportation study. Um, and it just to look at the roads and, and passability in the, in the immediate area of that development. One thing that I've noticed, having experienced all three fires in this area, is the ready, set, go seemed to work pretty well. And I think it's because, as, as James mentioned, people left, um, before they were told to go. Um, a lot of people left on ready. Um, and so there were very few people around. If, if we'd ever gotten to go, I don't think that we would have had the kind of issue that we had in our very first fire where houses were burning literally while people were still evacuating. And so, um, I, I do think that the newer ready, set, go might be helpful. But I also think that, and I'll be honest with you, I think people need to learn how to use roundabouts. And, and I'm not being flippant. I, I, I do think people use them as a four way stop rather than what they're intended to be, which is a traffic calming device. And so, um, if we can, if we can teach people maybe a little bit better how to use a roundabout, that might get the traffic to flow just on a regular day off of, um, North Mesa. That's about all I have to say. Thanks.
Thanks, Melanie.
First, I would agree with, uh, Chair Wrighty, because, um, I think that we need to update our emergency evacuation plans. You know, if, if we do have changes like that. I live on North Mesa and, um, if I can't get out, I'll probably rappel down the canyon. But in all seriousness, um, you know, we did have that roundabout added and that significantly improved the backup of traffic just for normal use. And so, uh, using the roundabout correctly, I think is also a good uh, suggestion from Teresa. Um, and the other, uh, evacuation route that we open up, you know, you go down Baranca, um, and, and you know, by the shooting range, um, that was very effective when we had to evacuate before. I've been through two evacuations of Los Alamos so far and, and that was very effective and we did not have a big backup of cars or anything. It, it worked very smoothly, no injuries, et cetera. So that's my position.
Thank you. Next question, Lynn.
Los Alamos County currently has a minimum wage of eleven fifty in accordance with the state minimum wage. As the wealthiest county in the state with a high cost of living, do you support raising the county minimum wage to seventeen dollars as suggested by the MIT Living Wage Calculator?
Teresa.
I think in order to attract people to, um, to support the small businesses up here, we need to do whatever we can and it, and it can be, it can be increasing our minimum wage, it can be increasing the benefits paid or given to people to support those businesses. I know when, um, I was on the board cottage preschool, we couldn't pay minimum wage and attract people um, to work in a preschool. We had to pay at least what, um, Santa Fe was paying so that we could get people to, to, um, to support the business. So it is, you know, it's a difficult one because if you, or difficult answer because you know that by increasing the wages of the employees, it's going to increase the expenses of the employer. But I honestly believe that that's the right thing to do. We need to pay people, um, a, a, at, at least a livable wage.
Randall.
Okay, I think my, my short answer is yes. And I think that there's a number of different ways we can start. So I think one, one way the county could start, uh, would be to make sure that all the contractors, uh, employees are being paid that, that wage. And I, I think that, uh, as, as we've heard, there's obviously a downside for the businesses of having to pay a greater wage. Uh, so I, I think that that's important to hear what the concerns are. I think it's also important to make sure people can, can live here. Uh, so if we're not, wages aren't supporting people living here, then uh, then it doesn't matter if there's any housing because there, there's no, they can't afford it. Uh, so I think it's, it's a, it's a matter of, of looking at this holistically and, and naturally we would, you know, it's, it's, it's a thing I think that we have to support at this point. So I think yes, I did that. Thanks.
James.
All right. So I don't think seventeen dollars an hour is enough to live up here. As a libertarian, you know, and I can't like tell people how much to pay, but I think seventeen dollars is not going to kill a business up here. But at the same time, seventeen dollars isn't going to be enough to get workers living up here. I think for the most part entrepreneurs, they're not like greedy, like, like the local small business entrepreneurs are not looking to exploit their workers. That's what, you know, certain big businesses in town do. So yeah, I think that people should be paid more than seventeen dollars to, to be up here, or we need to find other solutions like lowering the cost of living up here. So yeah, I, I guess to put it short, uh, I don't support telling people how much they have to pay their employees because they'll just, uh, not do business. But I think any local entrepreneur is going to pay their workers fairly, it to, to something that their business can sustain.
Reginald.
I do not support raising the minimum wage seventeen dollars an hour. I think that puts a, uh, a burden on local businesses here that can't afford to pay that amount. I also agree that the, you know, the, the businesses that need the, need the workers and that, and, and can afford to pay the additional amount, um, whether it be seventeen or twenty-five dollars an hour. um, and, and can afford to pay the additional amount, um, whether it be seventeen or twenty-five dollars an hour. Um, they're gonna do that to, to acquire help. Um, it, currently, the problem is, um, as James was mentioning, uh, you couldn't afford to live up here on, on eleven fifty or seventeen dollars an hour. I mean, part of the reason why we're McDonald's is closing at eight o'clock at night, Sonic's never got the people they need. I mean, many businesses, Smith's, a lot of these businesses around here don't have people because of the cost of living. It's, it's extremely high. Um, so I think that's part of the issue and we gotta, we gotta fix that. And we gotta find affordable housing for these workers so they can be here and live here. Most of them left during the pandemic. And I haven't seen them back. And now we're got a shortage of workers here in town.
Gary.
Thank you. Well, that's a lovely question, but it's too narrow, uh, since, uh, since taking economics in college, I've been fascinated with the way that markets work. And that is the basis for my proposal that we dramatically expand the housing in this community. All of our markets are terribly distorted and have been for years. We haven't done anything about it. By having plenty of housing, we will have people able to live here and able to work here. The housing prices will, will come down in the new developments. The, uh, we will have a broad spectrum of people who live here. Right now, the spectrum of people should be like this in terms of low end and high end. Right now, that is compressed so that, that only the high end can afford to live here. Uh, it, we could be like Santa Barbara's or Sun Valley or, uh, some of the other elite resort places that have to bus people in and put them up in dorms in order to have workers. That's not how we want to be. We want to have a natural balanced marketplace in which people can afford to live here, like to work here, can start businesses and be effective.
Thank you. Melanie.
I guess, uh, I, I'm experiencing this right now because my husband's small business here in Los Alamos is having some challenges with finding workers and we're finding that, um, it's very difficult to, uh, pay them what we were paying them before the pandemic. Um, can't get workers. Um, you know, we're looking at options, um, to have workers commute and we're having to pay more. Um, or else you just don't get workers. And, um, you know, of course that's going to impact the cost of, uh, the product uh, that is sold to customers. So customers are gonna end up paying more money. And, uh, you know, it, that could possibly drive away customers because they can find something cheaper. Um, and also, you know, that's a challenge just for, um, competing work because, um, you know, if you're competing for contracts, uh, you know, a lot of times it's, uh, lowest price technically acceptable. So, um, you know, there are a lot of complex issues to decide whether or not you automatically change minimum wage higher. Um, you know, so I think, I think that needs to be considered, uh, you know, the impact for small businesses is, is tough.
Suzie.
So my answer is yes. I think the county should pay its employees and ask its contractors through maybe the RFP process and requirements to pay its employees a living wage. And if that minimum wage needs to be seventeen fifty an hour through analysis, then that's what it needs to be. But it's more than just the wage an employee takes home. It's the whole package of benefits so that we can weigh their total, um, income relative to the cost of living here. So we need to look at the whole picture. I can say that, um, working for a small business here for a long time, we had an office administrator who was priceless. And she was always, um, tempted to seek employment at the laboratory. And that's kind of the elephant in the room because the lab pays really well and has great benefits. It's almost like if you can't beat them, join them. So, um, we, we felt like we were competing with the lab more than anything else. And so we paid well. But if, so I also am cognizant that if the county were to also pay better, then that's gonna put some pressure possibly on our small businesses, retail sector, UNMLA, the schools, hospital, et cetera. So there's got to be some ways that we can all work together to figure this out so that we can solve our workforce issues, quality of life issues. And, um, and, and that, and of course that will include housing supply and transportation and utility costs, the whole package.
Thanks. Lynn, what's the next question?
Do you have any concerns about the integrity of the voting process in Los Alamos?
Randall.
No.
James.
No.
Reginald.
Uh, the one problem I have and it, and it's to do with the state in general is, um, unfortunately, they don't require ID to vote here and, um, you can walk in and vote as long as you have somebody's name, address. And that's all they ask for. I've personally, I've got an issue with that. But that's at a state level. It's not at the local level. So, um, yeah, I think there's some issues.
Thanks, Gary.
Uh, thank you. So I believe that everybody who is qualified to vote should be able to vote. I believe that every vote that is cast should be recorded. I believe that no one should vote or that there should be no, no votes that are, uh, that are false votes. I think everybody in the system should be comfortable and confident that our voting process has integrity. Uh, so there's been a lot of questions in the last couple of years. I'm not gonna go into the national ones. But, uh, when the county clerk offered us an opportunity to come down to the county offices and review the, uh, the inspection of the voting machines and ask questions, I, I took that opportunity and had a lot of conversations with Naomi, asked a lot of questions. I am satisfied largely that, uh, our local county process has integrity. But I'm very concerned that there is, uh, hanging questions nationally. And really want, uh, for us to examine the whole voting process and make sure that those criteria that I said at the beginning really hold, that we can all be confident that the voting process has integrity. Thank you.
Thanks. Melanie.
Yes, I believe that our Los Alamos County voting, um, process has integrity. Um, and, uh, I always present my ID when I vote, so I don't if some people aren't, I don't know what's happening there, but I always, um, present my ID. Um, so that's all I have.
Okay, it's, it's not required, but you are welcome to do it.
Exactly.
Suzie.
Can you repeat the question, please? Because some, somebody answered no, somebody answered yes.
Do you have any concerns about the integrity of the voting process in Los Alamos?
No, I do not. And I would just add that it, it concerns me when, when when concern is expressed because then I think that erodes the confidence in our representative democracy. And, um, I think that we always, I think all of us want to make sure we've got integrity, but, um, I, I, I prefer a system where we encourage voting, we make it as easy as possible to vote. We welcome voting so that people feel like they've had a say in who their elected leaders are. And then they feel more confident that their elected leaders are always wanting to earn their vote and represent them and, um, be their voice with the, with the government who they've been elected to serve. So, um, I don't have any concerns and I, and I, and I would like to actually instill a culture of confidence in our, in our clerk's office and our voting process. Thank you.
Teresa.
I have no concerns within Los Alamos at the state level or nationally.
Okay, thanks. Lynn, next question.
How will you protect our trans and queer youth?
James.
Ah, that's a good question. So, uh, I think we really need to foster and encourage a culture of anti-bullying. Um, you know, this, this isn't just for our LGBT community, uh, but, you know, across all identities. Um, uh, and I think this really has to be a plea on the people of Los Alamos to stand up, uh, you know, when people are being bullied, uh, to have the courage, uh, to do something of it, you know, to stand up for those people. Um, you know, this is, this problem goes so big, uh, like the, the, the mental health issue in, in Los Alamos is just insane. Um, we, we cover it up. I think it's because of people don't want to lose clearances and things like that. Uh, but we have a serious mental health issue going on in this community. Um, and you know, it's, it's like, it's like a social thing, right? Like a lot of us are shut-ins. We're not very social. It, you know, it just, we just have to do better as a community that is open and inclusive and welcoming uh, and understanding and, and willing to listen to each other.
Thank you. Gary.
Thank you. Uh, I, I liked James' answer. I think that we have many people in the community of a, a wide variety of, uh, exception, exceptionalities. Uh, in my own, uh, group of loved ones, I have, uh, people who have autism, bipolar depression, who are gay, who have ADHD, uh, and other things. Uh, we've put a lot of effort in the American for just, American Disabilities Act to, to provide access to people who have certain kinds of handicaps. I think that everybody should be respected. They should not be singled out. They should be facilitated. Everybody should be treated fairly. Uh, certainly, nobody should be bullied.
Thank you. Melanie.
Um, I believe that we need to, um, continue to develop a culture of understanding, recognition and acceptance of people's, uh, people who are different, uh, in all sorts of ways and, uh, that we need to offer tolerance and protection, um, through organizations and, uh, other types of, um, community programs.
Reginald.
So I believe I understand the question, but could you ask it one more time? Just so I'm, because I'm like in the middle here, so I'm kind of lost the, the entire question there. So, and I can't find it in, on the screen here, so.
Okay, um, do you have, I, I'm sorry, I was looking for the next question. I think we're still on. Are we still on the question? Do you have any concerns about the integrity of the voting process in Los Alamos?
No. That was the last one.
Try me again. Where were we? Sorry. Oh, okay. Yeah. Okay. Hold it. How will you protect our trans and queer youth?
So I, so first thing is, is, is through educating at home. You the we have a lot of different cultures, a lot of different people, uh, that come from different countries and everything in, right here in this small little town. But personally, that education of how to treat people starts at home. Period. Bottom line. I personally grew up in the eighties, um, with an uncle that was gay. And, you know, all my friends, we hung out with them. Nobody ever had any problem. And it was due to the fact that every one of those people were educated on how to treat other people. And, yeah, you, you, I mean, you have that personally, the, the that divide, it comes from the internal workings of, of the home and you have to begin there first. And so by teaching kids how to treat other people, not bullying other people, and personally I've raised my kids that way because that's the way I was raised. And I believe that's where it starts today. And that's how you stop what's going on.
Thank you. Suzie.
I think this is an important question. I think, um, one way to approach it is to ask the, um, ask the queer and lesbian and gay community how they feel. Um, we could help in making sure that they are not, um, discriminated against. And I know we've got a DEI task force. I'm very glad we have that. I've, um, been following that a little bit and I would like to learn more. But I would like to continue supporting that. I think we could work with the YMCA and the Teen Center and the Family Strengths Network because I think they interact with teens and our youth quite a bit. And so we could learn from them. And, um, I think we could also learn from Special Olympics. I've been involved with Special Olympics off and on for various reasons and, um, they've had to contend with some of the change, same challenges. And some of the programs they've got at the state level, um, are just amazing and they're fantastic and they're built on inclusion and, um, and respect and learning. And so there, there's mutual benefit for non-Special Olympics, um, athletes and, and others who don't have special needs. So it's kind of a win-win. So I'd like to really focus on that. And I really think that we need to, um, while it's important to think it starts at the home base and with families, not all families and home bases are equipped to, 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 to model that for their kids. So I think it's kind of the onus is also on the county and the community to help in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you. Teresa.
Well, let me just say this, um, it's not tolerance, it's acceptance. And it's not a mental illness. It's not a handicap. It's who someone is. It's who they are, who they grew up to be. You're not gonna change them by shoving them into a closet. So the best thing to do is to educate the community to participate in events like Pride Week, um, to actually welcome with open arms anyone who says that they're gay or thinks that they're gay or is, is saying that they need to transition because they're not in the right body. So education is extremely important. Banning books in the high school is not education. Banning books in libraries is not education. We need to make sure that our teachers are allowed to have a welcoming and opening, an open space for some of these students who don't know who else to turn to. And same with our medical professionals. They need to be able to provide the level of care that's needed. Um, as a, as a gay person, I will say that it was very different when I was growing up than it is today. It's different now. It's better in some ways, but there's still a lot of discrimination out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Randall.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, so was that one of the concerts of some, some youth came and asked me this very question. It's like, uh, and it was more what the county was gonna do, but I think it's, I think it's important for, for us to think about this individually and, and, and as a role as a community leader as to what we're gonna do. And I think certainly, you know, showing up and being available at events, events like the Los Alamos Pride and, and just indicating your support that way. Um, you know, making sure yourself available to be educated. That's an important thing. Uh, I think from the county perspective, we do have, you know, the, the teen center, um, currently, then it is a, a safe space for everybody. And, and I think that's another thing that's really important. And, and those are all things I, I look to, uh, I mean, I, I don't look at this completely differently, you know, personally versus as a counselor is that it's important to, to meet people where they are and understand where they're coming from and not be judgmental. Um, that's, that's, uh, that's how I would attempt to support, uh, trans and queer youth. So, thank you.
Thanks very much. So we have time for one more question, Lynn.
Do you support our town going completely green with solar and wind?
Reginald.
Well, first of all, that's not a viable solution. Um, you're not Well, first of all, that's not a viable solution. Um, you're not gonna, you're not gonna come. I mean, you've got to have other sources of, uh, of, um, of, uh, electricity to be able to, uh, sustain, um, any city regardless. I, I do support, uh, the wind and solar initiative, um, but, um, I think you know, there are other things to look at in this county before we start implementing those type of initiatives. And first is, is working on our current infrastructure and getting that up to, up to par to where it can handle what we already have and what the plan is to move forward in the future.
Thank you. Suzie?
Yes, I do. Um, knowing full well that that is, you know, um, an am- ambitious goal um, here, just like it is worldwide and, you know, across our country. But I think, um, we need to be a partner in trying to achieve those goals with the state of New Mexico. And the US, I think that we need to make sure that we're working on technologies to firm up um, our power so we can avoid intermittency problems. We, um, we're not going to get there if we don't have it as an objective. Um, we as we start electrifying and, and having more electric vehicles, electrifying our fleet and trying to electrify our buildings, we, our power demand is going to increase a lot. And we don't have right now, um, all the firm-up resources in the renewable space to meet that expected demand. So without question, we're going to have to look at battery storage, hydrogen, um, other, other backup means to make sure we can get there. But the, to answer the question quickly, yes, I support that.
Gary?
Thank you. So the question was, uh, do we support the town going completely green? And my, my answer is that, uh, we act locally. We act locally in the interests of the community. There are, uh, so I was quite concerned that the, uh, that the county dictated the terms of reference of the layers committee to, uh, to come to a total carbon-free outcome in a short period of time. It takes time to do this and we have been working on technology for a long time to address some of these issues and it's not there yet. I have installed solar on my own roof. And, uh, it was a, it was a fun and interesting project and I, I like having that reliable source of energy in, uh, in an uncertain world. But I don't think that the county is ready to go green yet. And we should go at the pace that technology allows us to go. Uh, as we've listened to the, uh, county utilities folks talk about the concerns with, uh, going, uh, solar too fast and the other barriers, that's a real issue. Right now, natural gas is the cheapest and most plentiful and relatively low polluting source of energy. Uh, let's do what's reasonable for our people and gradually get to, uh, to longer-term solutions. This earth has been around for about 4.6 billion years. We've had a great deal of oscillation in climate and we're surrounded by evidences of dramatic changes in the world. Uh, that's our future as well as our past and we need to learn to be adaptive. Thank you.
Melanie?
As much as I would like to support, uh, going completely green with solar and wind, after I've, uh, talked to Philo Shelton over at the, uh, at the county, utilities department, I don't think that that's something that we're able to do, um, viably right now. Uh, hopefully we could work in that direction, but I think we have a few hurdles based on, uh, the demands that we have. You know, for energy.
Thanks. Teresa?
Yes, I think we should be a green community. But it's not going to happen overnight. I mean, nobody's saying you can flip a switch and tomorrow we're going to be green. We've got to start moving in that direction. We're running out of time. So we've got to start pushing the technology. And, and we really do need to get rid of natural gas. It's not necessarily, it can be cheap. Yeah, sure. But it's not good for you to have, uh, to have natural gas in your home. It's caused, there, there are links to a variety of illnesses in children from natural gas. It's, it's unhealthy. Let's move to something that's much more healthy for our communities. Let's, you know, let's cut back on the number of asthma, asthmatic children in our communities by having natural sources, um, natural green sources, not unnatural gas in our homes. Thank you.
Thanks. Randall?
Okay, uh, so yeah, the question, the way the question's worded is, uh, do you support going fully green with solar and wind? And, um, I think as some people have noted in their responses is that's actually not a viable solution. So, you know, the wind doesn't blow, blow sometimes and you know, the sun doesn't shine, so that wouldn't be possible. So it's missing something in order for it to be working, workable solution. So a potentially workable solution is having, you know, green sources plus storage. Uh, but we have a hundred megawatt demand when you look at the county and the lab. So it's a fairly large demand. Uh, the DOE also has, you know, green goals as well. Uh, what we're looking at is that the county has had a, a carbon neutral goal on electric production for many years of targeting 2040. And the only thing that Lares did was move that up to 2035. And Lares has a lot of other recommendations in it that have to do with actually solving the problem. Uh, some of which is we have hydroelectric plants already. Uh, we have, you know, some solar on the old landfill. And so we, we do have some options already. And I, I mean, I do support us going in this direction. But I'm not supporting us going in a direction that obviously can't work. So we have to have a, 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 an approach that's going to work. We have to have storage. The county has been working with DOE and, and the, you know, operating contractor, Triad N3B about different kinds of utility projects. There's a potential for utilities. I guess I'll have to stop. So there's a lot I could say on this, but thanks.
Thank you. James?
Uh, yeah, so I'll agree that, uh, it's definitely the goal that we should be striving for and it's not going to happen overnight. I think that nuclear power gets a bad rap, uh, that, that you know, there should be a lot more discussion about nuclear power and microreactors and things of that nature. I mean, we're a freaking nuclear research lab up here. What the heck? Uh, so, yeah, I mean, fossil fuels suck. Uh, right now they're the most reliable source of energy. But we shouldn't just say give up because it's hard to switch over to renewables and cleaner fuels and cleaner energy. So yeah, let's, uh, keep, keep going towards that goal of solar and wind.
Okay. So thank you very much. It's been really an interesting discussion. It's time for closing statements and we'll begin with Randall. You each got one minute.
Okay, uh, I will continue to work to find solutions for challenging problems like housing. I have learned a lot from projects that have been completed or nearing completion in the county, including the potential up for obstacles along the way. My past experience and the lessons learned from last four years on council will guide me to continue to make informed decision on behalf of the community that are practical and feasible. For those who know me, I'm big on transparency and always been available to meet and discuss any topic. I expect the same of others. I ask the council and staff be available to answer questions and provide documents without bureaucratic obstacles and continue to offer multiple methods to communicate with council and include additional methods such as web portals for agenda item comments. Thanks again to the league for the opportunity to speak and answer questions. I'm excited about the campaign and the opportunity to continue, continue the conversation with the community between now and November 8th. My name is Randall Reedy and I ask for your vote for county council.
Thank you. Teresa?
But once again, thank you, um, for being here or for reviewing this recording. And thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting. We need county counselors who have experience in and, and care about this community. I hope my answers here have shown you that I can represent this community well on the county council. I'm a good listener. I appreciate the diversity of opinions and needs in this community and I value our open spaces and the quality of life that our town provides. I'm ready to work for you. My name is Teresa Cullen. I respectfully request your vote in the general election for county council. Thank you.
Thank you. Suzie?
Thank you again for being here and for caring about our community and being civically engaged. And thanks to the League of Women Voters who worked so hard to help make sure people are informed and engaged. I've been a teenager, a parent and the daughter of aging parents here in Los Alamos. I've experienced Los Alamos and White Rock through a multitude of lenses. And I hope those diverse perspectives will be helpful to the county, the council and citizens. Which leads me back to you. I do want to hear your perspectives. Listening and learning are essential as we work together to address not only today's top issues, but tomorrow's as well. I think I have the background and the skill sets to adapt, listen, learn and lead. Again, my name is Suzie Haveman and I would be honored to earn your vote for a position on the Los Alamos County Council. Thank you.
Thanks. Melanie?
Thanks to everybody who, um, attended tonight and listened to all, um, the different positions on where we stand for, uh, our upcoming election. Um, I'm Melanie Hand. I have, um, lived in this community for several decades. I've worked in this community, um, for the lab for thirty-seven years for a small business for uh, county council. And I've also supported, um, many nonprofit organizations and county, um, boards and, um, committees, uh, over several decades. Um, so I have the experience and, um, the education and background to continue doing, uh, work to serve the county. So I appreciate your vote.
Thank you. Gary?
Thank you. Uh, we have to understand how things work and operate the way they work. The fact that water flows downhill means that irrigation and hydroelectric power can be accomplished. We need to pay attention to economics and the economics of housing is that supply and demand are critical elements. We have to have the supply of housing in order to bring down the costs in order to enable to have the workers to be in the community, to enable the businesses to start and be staffed. Those are really critical things. Uh, as I go out and knock on doors in the community, almost everybody agrees with that statement. They say, yes, that's absolutely true. We need to respect the whole community. It is a very, uh, diverse and interesting group of people and a wonderful group of people. We must listen to the voters when they say yes or when they say no. And when they say no, we have to say, okay, we'll follow your direction. I'm Gary Stradling. Please vote for me November 8th. I look forward to serving on the county council and meeting those big challenges.
Thank you. Reginald?
Thank you. Teresa was giving me the hint there. Uh, so first, thank you, uh, all for showing up this, this evening and being a part of this. The close, the few things I want to close with here is I am for environmental solutions in this county. As long as there, we work towards a reasonable and, and economical way of implementing those, those, uh, environmental needs and in meeting certain goals in our county without putting the residents of this county, um, with unburdened, uh, cost and, and, uh, and unnecessary, um, heartache and going forward. Um, I want to, I want to look for, um, following solutions for small businesses and, um, and helping cultivate that area, um, and, and growing our small business community. Also, uh, I might, I have thirty-plus years of experience in utilities, both at Los Alamos and other locations. So, um, I appreciate your, um, listening this afternoon and, um, please vote for, for me, um, for county council.
Thank you. And James?
Yeah, so I just want to let you guys know that I, uh, want to be a counselor that doesn't just talk, but acts. Uh, whatever your concerns are, I would love to talk to you about it. I think I have a positive attitude and can work with the communities in this group, uh, working with the county. And, you know, getting things done. Uh, that's why I'm running is I feel like these changes are just happening too slow and I'm, I'm happy to listen to people that disagree with me on that. You know, we gotta, we gotta work it out so everyone gets what they want. Uh, that's about it. Thank you for having me tonight.
Okay, so I'd like to thank all of our candidates. Was a really very, I think a very good presentation. And I'm afraid we're going to run a little overtime because we have a few announcements, but first I would like, uh, Naomi Mastis, our county clerk to speak.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me? Thank you. Um, I'd like to thank you all for your valuable time this evening. I will be sharing some election information which can also be found on our website or nmvote.org. I do ask you to please bear with me as unfortunately I'm feeling under the weather today. But I will do my best to share this ever-important information. First off, I'd like to start off, um, by noting that Los Alamos voters may vote in person at any early voting location prior to election day at the following location. Council Chambers, 1000 Central Avenue will be Tuesday, October 11th through Friday, October 14th. And then we'll resume again Monday, the 17th through Friday, the 21st. Those voting hours are from eight to five. Extended voting hours are as follows. Council Chambers, again in the municipal building and at our White Rock Training Room. That's located at 129 Longview Drive. That will commence on Saturday, October 22nd from eight to six PM. It will resume Monday, October 24th through Oc- through Saturday, October 28th. And then again pick up on the 31st through the 5th. And voting hours are from eight to six PM during these extended hours. Early voting is closed at both locations on Sundays and Monday, November 7th. So the last day to early vote is November 5th. Election Day polling places are our vote centers for election day, November 8th. From seven AM to seven PM are the municipal building, golf course, White Rock Town Hall, Betty E. Hart Senior Center and University in New Mexico. And that's in Building 6, room 631. If you would like to request an absentee ballot, if you prefer to vote from home, convenience or the privacy of your own home, you need to, um, apply for a ballot to be sent to you. So we'll have to receive that request. You could start doing that, um, as soon as today if you like. Absentee voting begins on Tuesday, October 11th. That's the first day that we can legally mail out ballots. You could request an absentee ballot by filling out an application and returning it to our office no later than Thursday, November 3rd. I do need to warn this date doesn't make it difficult for us to mail the ballot and get it back by election day. So I always advise folks to please request it sooner than later, um, just because of the mail time. Applications can be obtained by completing an application online at the NMS, the New Mexico Secretary of State Voter Information Portal, which is a website I shared earlier. And it's www.nmvote.org. You can obtain an application from our office. Or you could download an absentee application and fill it out and that can be, um, obtained from our website. But we do need a signature on there and we need the original to be mailed to us. So what's great is absentee voting has expanded to more, to be more accessible. Absentee ballots have been designed now so that a voter who is blind or visually impaired may independently use their own non-visual or low-vision technology to mark their ballot. They will need to fill out an application as, as the rest of the other folks. And an email address is required for delivery of the electronic absentee ballot. We'll need you to please read and complete the certification documents required to provide the electronic absentee ballot. Excuse me. A ballot will be emailed to voters who have properly filled out the application and an official return ballot. So returning the absentee ballot, absentee ballots may return via the following method. You could send it through the United States Postal Service. You can hand-deliver it to our office. You can hand-deliver it to an election poll worker at any early voting or Election Day site. Or you could drop it off at any of our two drive-through ballot drop box areas located at Mesa Public Library and White Rock Library. And those are under video surveillance twenty-four hours a day. They're picked up by a bi- bipartisan um election team on a daily basis. Excuse me. So who can deliver an absentee ballot or bring an absentee ballot to us? Per state statute, a member of your immediate family or your caregiver may hand-deliver your absentee ballot, provided that the voter has subscribed to the official mailing envelope of the absentee ballot. An unrelated third party may not deliver another voter's absentee. And if you would like more on that law, it's N M F A one dash six dash ten point one. Absentee ballots must be physically returned to our office by seven P M or at to any other sites I mentioned earlier. New Mexico was not a postmarked state. I know some people think, well, as long as it's in the mail, I'm fine. But we need to have it in our hot little hand by seven P M on Election Day. Real quick, I just want to put a plug in for N M vote dot org again. It's a great way to see how you're registered. It's a great way to get your sample ballot, which are available today. And um that link is on our website as well if you need it. Uh, real quick, in closing, I'd just like to mention that Voting Machine Certification will continue this coming Monday. We'll continue this um coming Monday. And um all are invited for the that logic and accuracy testing that occurs. And it's open to the public. It was advertised in last week's paper. Unfortunately, we only had one attendee. And I'd also like to remind voters that the of the and the citizens of the random post-election audits that take place after every election. Uh, I am open for uh any discussions. If anybody has any questions on any of the processes that we follow here in Los Alamos, I would love to sit and meet with you and clarify any of the misinformation that's um unfortunately being disseminated. But I thank you all for your very valuable time. Um, you can reach me by going to our website. All my information is located there. Thank you again.
Thank you, Naomi, and I hope you get better soon. So I have a couple of announcements. This forum has been recorded and will post it on YouTube. We'll send the link to the candidates and the press. There'll also be a link on our website at L W V Los Alamos dot org. The Los Alamos League, League of Women Voters of Los Alamos Voter Guide will be an insert in the Los Alamos Daily Post, delivered to households and offices in the mail on October sixth. If you did not receive it, copies will be available at the municipal building and the library. We always have three hundred extra copies printed in addition to the ones that go to households. And uh last year, we ran out, so please be aware. Vote four one one. The online League Voter Guide will go live on October fourth. You can also find the election and uh information on our website. On Monday, October third, from six thirty to eight thirty, we'll hold a forum for the candidates for New Mexico House District Forty-three, magistrate judge, sheriff, county assessor, probate judge, and municipal judge. I know some of them are unopposed, but we believe that it's important for the public to be able to see their elected officials and ask them questions if they wish. The link to register for that forum will be posted in the Los Alamos Daily Post and the Los Alamos Reporter, as well as on our website. So I'd like to thank everyone who attended. And I would especially like to thank the candidates for participating. And remember, everybody to vote. Oh, by the way, that you get, everyone gets four votes for County Council, not just one. So thanks again and good night.